It's 7:00 PM on August 8th, 2024. Can we convene open session of the Select Board meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the God, from the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone here for public comment? Review and approval of the minutes from July 25th, 2024.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes, 7:25, 24.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Town manager report.
So our next meeting is in two weeks on August 22nd. And quick update on the Quaker Meeting House Route 130 intersection project. So if you've driven by, they're doing a lot of the touch-up work on the sides of the intersection. I know they reset some signal heads this week and they're working on some of the computers that are attached to that. So the plan right now is the week of August 19th, and we have gotten a little more rain than we had been getting, and there's some proposed for the next few days. But ideally, the work of the week of August 19th, we plan to do the final coat of paving in the evening from roughly 7:00 PM to some point early in the morning. So once we have a better handle on that, we'll get the word out as best we can, but it should be right around the 19th. Couple of updates on beach-type efforts and erosion prevention. So I really want to thank our engineers at Woods Hole Group. With all the permits that we have, it's hard to keep on track of them, so they have one person who literally monitors all our permits. And believe it or not, the permits that we've had for the Dune and Beach template on the reconstruction and for the Scuzzet borrow site have a 10-year shelf life. And so they've been really good about, hey, you need to reapply and get them. So since our last meeting, we did get approval on the Scuzzet bypass, so it's another 10-year renewal, which is great. But it's just something we need to remember, that we need to keep doing that, just to keep our permits in place, because if you were to apply new, I mean, it's hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So all that looks good. And then directly related to that, unless there have been any change orders, which we're not aware of, the Army Corps plans to open bids for the Section 111 project on August 15th, so a week from today. I'm not so, I'm not sure how fast we'll see those results, because they, you know, they have to be reviewed and double-checked. And, you know, we really don't have any role other than just to watch, but once I get a feel for what those look like, I'll send an update around. They're usually really good about whenever they're ready to make an award, they let us know what the number's looking like.
Where they're opening those up?
It's all done electronically these days. So there's a sam.gov site, which we do have a link to, so if anyone's interested, I could forward it to you. And they usually post the results fairly quickly, but there's a lot of internal review before they award something that big. Couple of other updates, and this comes from Heather Galant, our Public Health Director. Just a lot of the West Nile virus mosquito samples have been popping positive in towns close to us, so far none in Sandwich, but there's several towns on the Cape and in southeastern Mass. So just wanted to let people know that we do keep an eye on that, and it's still just a moderate rating, even if you test positive, because that's just presence in mosquitoes, not in people. So just wanted to let people know that that's around. The county REPC, Regional Emergency Planning Committee, has been keeping track of the storm that's headed up the coast, just looks like a lot of rain, but they and Eversource have been sending regular updates, so if something materializes, we'll be ready for that. And I think that's about it.
Any questions for Bud? Okay. Correspondence, statements, announcements, future items and follow-up.
The Colby Lippincott Whiffleball Tournament for Saturday got postponed to Sunday, so anybody that was planning on going to that, it got postponed, same time and place, just on Sunday.
Thank you. Yes, Mr.?
Charlie, I think we all got it, but KP Law had sent out a couple of weeks ago a decision on use of your private emails, and it was very interesting for me to read. And I guess it's a reminder to us that don't conduct any of our business on your private email. You can still use your private email, but there are conditions, and we all should read that, because I guess it occurred where a town manager out west was always using only his private email for business, and then he shut somebody out when they complained, and then went to the courts, and they said that it's government business and you can't shut people out from that. So might be interesting for everybody to read it, just to make sure that you're not using your emails in a way that you could get trapped in that, so.
Very good. Thank you for sharing that.
Charlie, if I could just add relation to that, Attorney Michelle Randazzo, who is town, that's who we use at Town Council's office for open meeting law and public records questions, she's going to be doing a, during the day for staff, and evening for any boards and committee members who are interested, you know, updates on both those laws, the respect policy that the board adopted many years ago, you know, anti-harassment policy that we have, that staff get trained on every year, and we ask, we're going to add that to it as well, that recent decision about social media, and several other things. So we're actually talking to her tomorrow about exactly what we're going to go over when we hold this event, and our goal is to do it some point by the end of September, depending on her availability. So once we get that schedule, we'll pass the word on that to the board, but also to all other boards and committees in town.
Great, thank you. All right, just one quick one. On Tuesday, August 6th, the Sandwich Fire Department conducted a doomsday exercise, activated inter-municipal agreements, implement the portable command post, activate the Citizens' Emergency Response Team supplement, activate the vehicle equipment, undertake an emergency radio communications backup plan, set up emergency non-drinkable water distribution, and a demonstration of the drone. Very interesting foray into a possible reality. That's great. Okay. That's all I have. Staff meeting. Paul Houlihan, Fund for Sandwich Advisory Committee, update on the Fund for Sandwich Activities and Grant Awards.
Thank you, Mayor Randazzo, I appreciate the call.
The green one. It's in the middle.
Okay. We'll start again. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm going to be very brief, but I did want to update you on the activities of the Fund for Sandwich. As you may recall, we began operation in 2017, and issued our first competitive grants at the end of that year. The committee is made up of four of us, Madeline Wing Adler, Denise Dever, Paula Johnson, Attorney Tom Rockwell, and myself. And we oversee the operation, we make the decisions in terms of who we're reaching out to and what grants we're giving and in what amounts. The purpose of the fund, as we envisioned it back in 2017, was to provide, to raise private money and to turn around and then make grants to nonprofit organizations and town departments in Sandwich that are working on behalf of the residents of the community. So beginning that year, we began, we had no money, so we, we began raising from nothing, and a number of us put money on the table ourselves. That reimbursement hasn't occurred yet, and probably never will. But 2017, 18, and 19, we did competitive grants once a year. And what I mean by competitive is, we would put out a request or proposal through the Cape Cod Foundation, which is our oversight organization, and organizations would apply, and then we would make decisions about it. And we do have an application review committee, and it's made up of Susan James, Christine Ross at the Chamber of Commerce, and Kevin Zeralt, who's, as you know, on the school committee. In 2020, with the inception of the COVID pandemic, we completely changed our operation, and rather than remaining a passive review, we went into much more active outreach to organizations in the community, particularly those that we're dealing with, the stresses that families were under, the children were under, the elders were under, and we began making proactive grants. And so that's continued up until the present time. So we have two modes of providing funds in the community. One is proactive, where we go out, talk to the organizations, talk to the directors, what do you need, how can we help? And then at the end of the year, we also continue to do the competitive grant applications. And I would say that at this point, through the end of June, we have distributed, we have raised and distributed $97,000. And most of that money comes from small donors. Most of it comes from residents of Sandwich, although there are people in the area who also donate. So our receipt of funds ranges from $25 or $50 up to multiple thousand dollars, depending on people's means. So every dollar counts, because we use every dollar to serve the community. And at this point, we have provided funding to 33 organizations in Sandwich, including a number of town departments. We have provided about 38,000, of the 97,000, we provided about 38,000 to a number of town departments, and these include the Council on Aging, they include the Rec Department, they include the library, they include the School Department, and they include also the, I'm forgetting one, the Town Archives. So the town itself has actually benefited from the funds that we've raised. And this, by the end of this year, we will have made probably a half dozen additional grants, which will put us over $100,000 since 2017 of, you know, gathering money and distributing money to these organizations. And in your report, on the last page, there's a list of the 33 organizations and the amounts that we've given to each one. So our intention is to continue working hard in terms of raising funds, and also to stay in contact with the organizations in town, with the town departments, and continue to be able to make the kind of grants that, you know, in and of themselves are not large, but everyone tells us, every dollar makes a difference. So we're, we're inspired by that, and we'll continue to do this kind of work. So that's my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions or comments you might have.
Very good. That's very impressive.
Yeah, but just a great list of organizations that you've helped, and you can be proud of yourselves for that. We appreciate it a great deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our, and our role in it is actually to, you know, encourage people at home to contribute to the fund. That's part of our leadership involvement, and it's a great multiplier from small contributions to influencing a whole lot of people with, which is what, in these days, is not a lot of money. Really compliment you, Paul.
Going along with what Patrick said, could you give the public how they can contribute and where to send it if they want to?
Yeah, I should have mentioned that, thank you. We have a website, it's fundforsandwich.org, and you can go on to that, and there's a mechanism by which you can contribute online. You can also send a check, if you prefer that, to the Fund for Sandwich care of the Cape Cod Foundation, and again, that's all on the website. I should also mention that, you know, the donors are extraordinary. People give what they can, and it's interesting, because people, when they've given once, and this is often true in a lot of different environments, when they've given once, they give again. And particularly if we can continue demonstrated, demonstrating that, the money is being put pretty immediately to good use. And what's happening now more and more is that people are making monthly donations on an automatic basis, which is really good, because they may be giving $10 a month, but at the end of the year, that's a good chunk of money. And so we're really encouraging people to think about doing that. But again, we can't thank the donors enough. You know, this is not a hugely wealthy community, and it's impressive what people have done, and hopefully will continue to do.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to old business, the fiscal year '25 budget and related updates.
We have a couple of quick updates on several ongoing topics, but I know Heather mentioned it at the last meeting, but the state did release the final budget numbers for FY '25 on their estimates for receipts and charges, and when you plug those numbers in, we're still in good shape compared to what we voted at town meeting. You know, there's little things here and there that we might not fully understand, but, you know, the overall picture is good, and I know we might talk about it in a few minutes, but I, in speaking with Dr. Maruscheck, the schools did get more in Chapter 70 funding than we voted at town meeting, and I know they're very interested if the board was so willing to possibly include that on a, on a special town meeting warrant, to try to appropriate those additional funds with a commitment to use it towards their facilities and capital, just regular improvements internally in the schools. But I know that's something we'll talk about as that gets moving, you know, closer to a date, if we decide to have a special town meeting.
Bud, do you know what the number is?
The difference between what we voted at town meeting and what the state gave for Chapter 70, it's another $164,000. So that, if we increase their appropriation by that much, they would put that towards, you know, capital and internal repairs. The way the so-called law works is, you make the appropriation at town meeting inclusive of your anticipated Chapter 70 funds, so if we didn't take that vote, the same number that was voted in May would apply, but in effect, what it would do, because more would be coming from Chapter 70, the local appropriation goes down by that same amount, so.
Any other questions for Bud on the budget? Okay. Wastewater Strategic Plan Meeting and Leadership Matters Session.
Yes, I think, yeah, so we've talked a little bit about the leadership class that several of us took over the past year, there were five of us, and then another group took it of future leaders, about five more people since we went, and we have five more going in the fall. And so one of the outcomes of that is a day-long session where the leaders of that program come down in town and do a program, trying to pick a topic that's timely. And so we felt, the one that was brought us that really impacted so many departments is wastewater, and so in addition to talking about wastewater, there's also going to be training on, you know, how to properly structure a meeting to make it most effective. And so it's not just wastewater, but that's going to be the focus of it. So tentatively, we're waiting for final word, but we're shooting for Tuesday, October 29th, and when that gets scheduled, you know, we'll send out invitations and plan stuff. There is an encouragement to try to involve other towns. For example, if we contribute to wastewater issues in their communities, so we might ask some people from Mashpee, who we meet with regularly, and possibly some people from Barnstable, so see how that goes.
Any questions on that one? Okay. Potential special town meeting.
I know we've.
November 18th.
We typically, when we hold a special, try to do it between Veterans Day and Thanksgiving, and the one Monday between those, to try to avoid Thanksgiving week, is Monday, November 18th. So I did just put together a quick list. Heather and I keep a running tally of any articles that might be needed, so I just wanted to show these to you, and I know we had talked previously, this again is heavily focused on wastewater, with all the work that's going on. So three smaller articles. One is if we do decide to appropriate more money to the school operating budget from that state funding, to rescind the authorization that was given to issue debt from the CPA account for the Wing School disposition. We never had to borrow those funds, but the bond people don't like you to have that authorization sitting out there, they like you to rescind it, so simple vote. And then one of the things that I know we talked quite a bit, we, in fact, we went with the RFP when we hired the project manager for the repairs to this building and for the golf course, but we didn't appropriate money for them to do work at the golf course. So, meaning the reconnaissance work to figure out what improvements we need to do on that front wall that's having some structural issues. So if we could appropriate some money just to keep that project moving, and then the primary reason would be three wastewater issues. One would be if we do want to increase the percentage from 2% to 3% on the surcharge, which is what the board has talked about for quite some time now, the timing, if you remember, there has to be a certain number of days between when you voted at a town meeting and when it appears on a town election, so the timing would be right if we voted it now, it would appear on the town election next May. And then also to make an appropriation from the balance that's in that account, so we can keep moving on different projects. I know the board's well aware, but maybe the public isn't. We've been focusing a lot on the three school wastewater plants, trying to get waivers from the state on Oak Ridge and Forestale, and then some pretty significant repairs that are needed at the high school. There were meetings on-site this week, doing, you know, more review of what's needed at the high school. Our full applications have been submitted on Oak Ridge and Forestale, so we're just waiting on word back on our waiver request, but it would be nice to keep, keep all that work moving, and I know we've said it several meetings, but that would also be inclusive of the $850,000 we received from the County ARPA funds for those purposes, so we would use those monies first and then start using ours. And then lastly, I believe Representative Viera from Falmouth was instrumental a few years ago in getting, in addition, and an amendment to some of the state laws that would allow sewer betterment hookups to be funded over 30 years instead of 20 years, and I believe there's a provision, although we'd have to look at it. Right now, if you do a water betterment for 20 years and you sell your home, you have to resolve the betterment before the property changes hands or is part of the transaction. I believe there was something added to this where you wouldn't have to, but the new owner would have to acknowledge the betterment for the remaining years. So knowing how much this is going to be needed across the Cape, that would be wise to take that vote, so we'd be able to give the public that opportunity when the time comes. There's a couple more that we've talked about internally, but we don't know enough about them yet to put on a list, but, you know, as it gets closer, I'll keep bringing this up, just to see what we think we should do.
Just a quick one, please, on the, on the 1% increase in the whiff, that, that'll translate into less money that the town will need to borrow, right?
Yes, 100%. I think all the work that we've done for the last three, four years since that's been in effect, has shown that without having to borrow money and just take money from that account, we've been able to, it costs a lot less to fund it without interest costs or other things, and it's substantial enough that we can do some pretty significant work with that money. Without a doubt, once we get doing the really large work and the, you know, tens of millions amounts, we're going to have to issue debt, but this allows us to keep the ball rolling and really get some bigger things accomplished. And I know, I think, once we know better about the school issues, maybe even just before that October internal meeting, that's a day meeting, like a working meeting, might be able to have Dave Mason come in, and we can give you an update on some of our efforts. I was on Zoom yesterday with officials from the Army Corps Joint Base Cape Cod, Converge and myself, just trying to talk about the effluent discharge capabilities at the base, and is there a way that the Corps could assist? So, you know, that's really the pinch point for all of our wastewater issues, is the discharge more than the treatment? So it's a long way to go on that, but a lot of work's taking place.
But if we increase that 1%, what does that bring in a year?
It brings in, and Bill Jennings could tell you exactly, it's about 1.25 million for each percent, and the cost for the average homer, the last time I checked that, and I'd have to, I want to tighten my numbers, it's about $75 a year.
So if that passes, we would be bringing in about 4 million?
We'd be bringing in about, yeah, yeah, like we're getting, we're bringing in about three and a quarter now, well, we would be bringing in about three and three quarters.
And just so the public understands, that whiff was so important, because
Yeah.
we spent $900,000 on our, on our contract with White Pierce.
We did, yeah.
We didn't have to borrow one, I could have fun.
And the next big step for them is starting to design the conveyance system, and I think the general rule of thumb in most engineering firms is 10% of the contract cost, well, we're looking at at least, you know, 125 million plus project, that's very expensive even just for the engineering, so to be able to keep that work going and get us ready for when we need to start implementing, you know, it'd be, it's critical. And if, by the time we get to town meeting, we can show examples of how bringing in money, like Charlie said, now, and letting it build up and using it when we need it, without having to issue debt, will save people money over time, so we'll be able to show that.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Draft Select Board meeting scheduled through the spring of 2025.
We've had us on the last couple of meetings, and then usually the MMA issues better dates on some of their planned things, so I think the difference on this one, I did put down the potential for the special town meeting. Charlie was mentioning, depending on how things fall in November, we might need to have a special meeting, depending on with the holidays and the MMMA Fall Conference. I did put down for the 19th, which is just before Christmas, possibly, I mean, it makes sense, because there's a lot going on that time of year, maybe an afternoon meeting. And then the MMA confirmed that their annual meeting, which they're now going to call 351 Connect, is going to be on January 23rd, which still gives us one more meeting in January for the budget presentation for next fiscal year. And then I just tried to carry it through town meeting, so we'd see the rough schedule. We can fine-tune that as we go.
So you just need a consensus taboo?
Yeah, if people want to check it, and they know they have vacations planned or other things, or if there's a holiday we should work around or something, just let me know.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the Chair. I have none of the old business.
Okay. Charlie, maybe one, one thing for the sake of the public. The bids are opening up for the 111 study being on the 15th. They've already set a time, right, for the project? Maybe the public should know what that is.
I think as long as the bids come in within the money that they have, and the availability in terms of timing of the contractors, which the contract schedule is spelled out in the bid specs, there are environmental restrictions on when certain work can take place in an environment like that, and so. And so I think the full window is roughly October 1st through March 1st. But their hope is that the, you know, if a contractor could come and really focus, hopefully things could happen between October 1st and December 31st. So potentially by the end of the calendar year, the project would be done. And the huge difference between this project and the one that we typically see when the canal gets dredged is that's, the canal dredge is one where they fill up the boat, the boat moves, then gets put on a different barge and pumped off. This would be a fixed bar, a fixed dredge on, near Scusset Beach that would just, could continually dredge. And as the spoils came up, as long as they were compatible, they then get pumped through a pipe from their bottom of the canal up. And they get pumped up as, as they're dredging, the pumpings take place onto the beach and then they move the pipes along the beach. But it, it should be a massive project, close to 350,000 cubic yards roughly. I mean, much, much bigger than anything we've ever seen. So. And then the shaping and all the rest that takes place. And then when that's all done, they let it settle and beach grass plantings and all the rest. So it's a really big project. And the total allotment that's allowed under federal law was 12 and a half million, and I believe that recently was increased to 15. I haven't heard if this project qualifies. I would assume it would. But their cost estimates for that type of dredging are much less than when, the type of dredge that's typically used in the canal. Because it doesn't have to move that much. So we'll see how it goes.
Right, understood. And for what it's worth, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay. Onto new business. Sale of property with agricultural tax lien at 305R Quaker Meeting House Road.
So this is pretty rare. And I want to preface it by saying I think we're more familiar with agricultural preservation restrictions, which are different than an agricultural tax lien. So an APR, which is a more substantive, bigger tax break, the best example in Sandwich is the Canodia property at the top of Windstar Farm property, also known as, at the top of Country Farm Estates. You know, that has had an APR on it for many, many decades. If anyone ever sold that and was trying to get out of the APR, there is like hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars owed the state government to get it out of that program. This is different. So this is an agricultural tax lien that's applied for and approved at the local level by the Board of Assessors, but it carries with it state tax benefits and local. And so anytime an agricultural tax lien property gets sold, it's a requirement that the Select Board approve the sale. The tax lien in this case is staying on the property. You just need to sign off on it. And I believe the Planning Board is voting a similar vote later this month. So we don't do these much. Ben Stich, our Director of Assessing, did some research and a couple of pages down in the packet, highlighted in yellow, it shows like why the board's required to take a vote that, you know, we're not interested in buying the land.
But they haven't sold it either, right?
They have, they have an agreement in place, a purchase and sale agreement, but it's contingent on the votes that they need to get here.
So one of the questions I had was in the law, it says that there's a minimum of five acres. Must be at least a minimum of five contiguous acres of land under the same ownership and be actively devoted to agriculture. If I, I look at this, it's only 375. Would that not be exclusionary of this?
I don't, I don't know. And I don't know if the proposed buyer owns land near there as well. I don't know.
To be, you know?
The other half of the bog.
Yeah.
And then the other thing.
It's the bog at the bottom of the hill is the active. And then they had hayfields.
Yeah, a big hill.
On the upper fields. So it was always agri.
Right. But it has to be under the same. Yeah, I don't know if they qualify because it says the, well, the first qualification is the property must consist of at least five contiguous acres of land under the same ownership. And as I look at the plot plan, it's 375.
Yeah, I'll have to bring them back then in a couple of weeks. I have no clue on that.
I mean, it's just something I just caught that as I was looking through it the other day. And then the other thing was the letter that we got, you know, stating that it was the value where they're going to offer. I mean, not that we have the properties currently under Chapter 61A and the sale price of this property is $150,000. I, you know, do we get verification that that's a legit thing? Because I did some research on this and most of the cranberry bogs in the state, that even like the one up in Plymouth, the DCR got involved. They paid $3,500 an acre. These guys are paying $40,000 an acre for the same thing.
We have a copy of the PNS in the office.
Okay. But that's the only part of this that I questioned was whether it qualifies or not. It has to be five contiguous acres. And it shows on our property, I think, 375.
Yeah, it does say that.
And I don't know if that, you know, the new owners or the adjoining property.
And that agricultural lien has been on the property for a long.
Right.
Yeah, yep.
Well, I wonder if the law has changed.
Right.
They changed, they updated. I can't believe they issued it.
I can bring it back in two weeks.
Okay, so we'll defer a decision on this until August 22nd meeting?
Yeah, I apologize for the applicant. Yeah, I don't want to hold up their sale, but if it doesn't meet their requirements, whether or not it's the. Just over the tracks. Do we know, is that, is that going to hold up their sale, Bud?
Um, my recollection on the purchase and sale, it was like this all had to happen. And the closing was, I think, by the end of the calendar year. But obviously they wanted to go sooner, but it will delay, yeah. But I know it's, it hasn't been before the Planning Board yet, and that's coming up. So I don't think there's a required order. So hopefully that won't hold that up.
Yeah, I don't want to hold up anybody's deal, but at the same time, I want to make sure that this, whether that was an oversight.
It's 1923 Land Court land, though. So it may have gotten in under the regs.
Right.
Or been considered part of.
The other.
Active log next to it. This kind of subdivides off.
Does.
Piece of it.
Right.
I was looking to see if there was anything. I don't see anything.
Because it shows like on the one parcel piece, it shows almost like a panhandle easement, you know, like a front edge piece going in for, on the side, next to the bog.
There's nothing on this deed that actually says what the acreage is. It gives the foot measurements.
Yeah, on the, on the town property card.
That's why on the, on the conveyance, that was 1995.
Yeah, I'll find out more.
That's what I'm saying.
If you were, but someone, forest, and they have forest, and you're a forester, they can put their land under this restriction for forest and/or aggie as long as it's actively used for aggie. And that's the basis of their taxation. So I'm thinking that's the way this was.
So their, their active uses of the bog?
Yeah, when they're actively using the bog.
Right.
And it's cranberries and blueberries, I heard. With the property.
Who would have met the five acres? But it wouldn't have, but it wouldn't have only been this lot. It would have been this lot and the lot to the east of it, which is the other half of the cranberry bog and the other half of the hill.
Right, but what it says is it has to be under the same ownership. So back then, it might have.
You can do it now. I mean, I know my neighbor.
Right.
Interesting.
Yeah, I'll find out more.
So we're good with collecting some additional details and deferring this until August 22nd? Okay, we need a motion to defer?
No.
No. Okay. Recommended Cultural Council Appointments. Elizabeth York and Shriya Shukla.
The other one, just the, Shriya is actually a student. She's a junior.
Yeah, she, she does a terrific job. I've seen her in action, if I can say it that way. She's very thorough, very efficient.
Which I think is the second student that we've had apply. The other one was on the.
Rec.
Rear is on the.
Rec?
The rec, yeah, on the rec, yeah, it's great.
I imagine they both are recommended, Bud.
Yes, yeah.
Make a motion, we recommend Elizabeth York, Shriya Shukla to the Sandwich Cultural Council.
Second.
Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. York and Ms. Shukla. Other matters not reasonably anticipated by the chairman. I have none. Anybody else? Okay. Public comment? Anybody else for public comment? Okay. Closing remarks? Just quickly, let us please continue to maintain those under attack in Eastern Europe and the conflict in the Middle East and the overall threats to world peace in our thoughts and prayers. Now, we need a motion to enter executive session. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, the Chair declares that having an open session may have a detrimental effect upon the town's bargaining, litigating, or negotiating position as applicable. Purpose number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Acquisition of real property, disposition of real property, Town Hall Annex, 145 Main Street. And as you make the motion, it should be noted that we won't be reconvening in public session until August 22nd.
Second.
You're going to make it. You're going to make the motion.
Make a motion, we go to executive session then.
Second.
There you go. Motion by Mr. George, second by Mr. Hockter. I have a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ellis, aye. Mr. Miller, aye. Mr. Hockter, aye. Mr. George, aye. And I am an aye. It's unanimous. We are adjourned in public session until Thursday, August 22nd, at 7:00 PM here in Historic Town Hall. Thank you and have a good evening.
Did you scan it for bugs? I'm heading out tomorrow to Kevin's house in Corning New York.
Oh, there you go.
He just got a new house. I gotta help him finish it up and move in.
Nice.